Who is the commander of town?
I was, I was, I was.
Uh, sorry for that. You have been a really good. Fire. Forgot if you wanted. Oh, they're moving. Fudge of the presidency to the flag. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible. A roll call by the clerk.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Weeding? Mr. Walsh? Mr. Michael?
Here.
Mayor Lyons?
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, first up on the agenda is public comment. Anybody has public comments, say your name, your address that we choose to, and you're on a three minute.
My name is Tim O'Brien. I'm a resident at ten twenty-one West Surnet Road. I retired from the Chicago Fire Department about four years ago, and I immediately left Chicago because I could not stand what we found on there. When I was like nineteen seventy-five, I was about fifteen, sixteen years old, I watched that section eight program that they were gonna put together, come in, they destroy everybody, every community around me. I just watched communities fall down, 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 down. Watched streets fall, got businesses falling, wanted to replace curbs, watched spam, watched drugs, watched crack, watched the development of the drug program. You watch politicians get what they, there used to be drug dealers, now they're kind of police, you're not like them. So I moved out here. Found a little additional town. Started going to Corn Fest, I came off everybody, uh, going to Lakeview Club. Going to Corn Fest, Catfish Daddy's hitting all the festivals. I gotta work down there, I gotta move south of eighty. Since I moved here, I heard nothing but. People in this building hate each other. This guy hates this guy, this guy hates him, we gotta fire Todd, he can't be the police chief no more, okay, we gotta get rid of this mayor, we gotta do this. I've never seen. A little tiny, which should be a really close knit group of people. Go after each other like I have since I moved here two years. If you guys keep playing this game with this, with this guy building houses, we keep talking about the section eight stuff. You will rue the day. And I'm telling you from life experience, for thirty, forty years, then thirty years in Chicago Fire Department, life experience. You will rue the day, you will destroy every member of this community, you will destroy their homes, their properties, their values. He's gonna need to hire six more attorneys to defend fifty more police you have hired, because every low and poop man, the first thing they do is blame the police, you know, turn the television on. All day, every day, the police are on, the police are on ice as bad. Not, is, is all ice today? Because they're here now, but six months ago before they were all the police, right? I'm telling you from experience, I'm telling you from my entire life watching this happen. Whoever in the room is in bed with this guy building houses who keeps talking about four hundred units, three hundred units, multi-units, you are going to destroy this town. You made it for me in retirement. I put my house on the market, I sold it, so I really have no stake in the game anymore. I'm moving November twenty-first. I came here for high hopes, I made friends with the guys at the American Legion, I donated a couple of shirts, I got some artwork to the firehouse that I had in October. From when I sold my last house. I feel like I have a square peg in a round hole. It's time everybody that works in this building grows up and starts treating everybody else like an adult. Stop hating your neighbor. You wanna do that, move sixty miles north of that ship called Chicago.
Thank you. All right, poll of comment, who else? Poll of comment. All right, I need a approval of minutes. A motion to approve minutes for the Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda would be reports by city official. Um, first, uh, first I have my notes, uh, Dale is not here at the meeting tonight, um, he's with his wife who is in the hospital. Just want to say that I thought some prayers are with Dale and his family. Second of all, the, uh, my notes, our junior comment football team. Uh, they advanced to the Super Bowl, they play on Sunday at two o'clock, that game is being held at Linkway West High School, and that's in Manhattan. Uh, they're having a great season, my understanding, they've only given up one touchdown all year. So shout out to the sixth and seventh graders, I'm looking forward to coaching those guys in a couple of years. Uh, also, they had cheer league competition through the league, our, I guess, our lightweight cheerleaders are around on social media, that they had placed second place. So congratulations to the junior comment lightweight squad. To address a little bit what you said, I did read something on social media, uh, references to a, a apartment complex being built. I asked the question, within the corporate city limits of Braywood, did you see the answers I got? No, I had to take it off. So I just wanna answer this question, so Steve and I had met with a developer who was interested in putting up a complex. Uh, we advised him that we're, there's just no desire to build an apartment complex in the city room. So as of now, there's no apartments being built in Braywood. So there are things that we are trying to do, and we are trying to set a standard, what the expectations are in this town. And whenever we meet with the developer, we're, we're trying to raise the bar, we think that. Braywood deserves that, we believe that, and every decision we make is based on that. So we're trying to raise the standard here and what the expectations are in this community. Uh, move on to today. Steve and I met with Drazen and Bauer, and everything is, is on track. They're moving their mouth, they should start building, they said in spring, right?
Yeah, Bauer's a little bit behind, but yeah.
So, uh, at this point, that's all I have today. Uh, next up here is the city manager, management consultant, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, uh, the first item is, uh, in your board pack here regarding, uh, to establish official status and credibility. For government organizations with respect to our email, uh, in our, um, dot gov or dot IL or whatever, um, those, uh, IT things are. Uh, we are trying to, uh, create a little bit better credibility and trying to create a little bit, um, more security. And, uh, working with Gary and Josh, um, they are suggesting that we eliminate our dot US. Uh, affiliation and move to an affiliation that is a dot gov affiliation. Now, still, people still send emails, dot US, well, that could transform over to the dot gov, but the dot gov has more credibility, it has more security, less fraud. And it is more in tune with what a government organization should do. Uh, so we are recommending, uh, that we move and look into the dot gov connotation. Uh, there are two emails that are available, they're just research, um, connotations are, um, it would be Braywood. Uh, IL, dot gov, Braywood IL, Illinois, dot gov, or the city of Braywood, dot gov. Braywood dot gov is not available, somebody else has it, so we're gonna have to go to you, the city or city of Braywood dot gov, or Braywood IL, dot gov. Okay, I'm throwing this out here for discussions, discussion, if, um, if you have any preference that you may have, or. What, what you think is best, we as staff would recommend city of Braywood, dot gov. Uh, it just doesn't look right with the IL next to it, you know, next to it, but also by saying the city of Braywood is a connotation, hey, we are a city. Uh, we are a government entity versus just Braywood IL. That's what we, however, by my word, bring it to your, your, uh, uh, for discussion, your knowledge and say, hey, this is what we're, we're thinking of. Uh, just garnering the input from you.
Yeah, I talked very nicely to the benefits of movement to. Dot gov. And it, it makes sense. Yeah, it makes sense.
Should we move forward, we can, uh, Braywood, city of Braywood.
City of Braywood, dot gov.
Does that sound a little longer, but it does give us a more professional and more, um, uh, credibility by saying city of Braywood, dot gov.
No, I agree.
I agree.
All right, um, and there's really no board action to be done with that, I don't, other than just information. Uh, we'll have Gary start working on this, Josh was our IT manager, and he loves that title, and, um, uh, and he's also our director for tonight's board meeting, so. But, uh, we'll work with those two individuals and, uh, I'll keep the council informed as we progress. And just lastly, uh, just to give you a quick, um, uh, Ryan twenty-minute update. Just a, uh, a, a few good things, obviously, the problem one twenty-nine project is, is, is ongoing. Um, the binder course is down, uh, they're hoping to have it completed with the surface course before the snow flies. And there's been some traffic issues, and we asked the residents, please, uh, be patient, and it is a Illinois project, it's not a city of Braywood project. Be patient and work through the, some of the delays. Um, surf, uh, I couldn't do it on there, but we are having some issues with surf, now following through on some repairs. Uh, we continue to work through that, uh, we found that there was no bond put up, uh, when the, at, the, uh, agreement was passed. Franchise agreement or the, uh, utility easement agreement, uh, so our hammer or our leverage is less than normal, but we will still continue to work through and. Try to get them to repair the things that they can get done. Uh, tonight, the chief, I believe, was gonna talk about LED lighting, uh, for city hall, while we're looking at a grant. Uh, that this company works with and through, uh, which will replace an energy efficient for pennies on the dollar. Um, B-box, we have a B-box issue on two twenty-five Wildwood, uh, I will give, uh, council more updates as that, as that develops. Um, we have a proposal on the lake property, uh, we know the developer who desires to make it more of a corporate retreat type entity, and we continue to work through that. Very much in the end stages, uh, who we have met with a developer. Storm Sword Pipe on Hickory, we've gotten some phone calls, our Public Works Department is installing, uh, Storm Sword Pipe on Hickory to facilitate and work with the parking lot expansion for all the rides. Uh, Sean, you wanna give a quick update, I mean, I should remember your, your engineer, but I'm G. Lane, and I'm there to go projects, you have a board detail report, Mike.
Uh, yes, again, um, the, the storm sword has been completed on the Beat Lane, Beat Lane has been, was, uh, all the concrete work has now been done, they did install that today. That road's gonna remain closed until Monday. Uh, they do have some asphalt patching at the front, the north end of the road they have to do, they're gonna try to get that done by Friday. Uh, the contractor is completing all the removal of all the concrete work on Stacy Court, um, concrete's now been replaced, stone is in, is in place. They're coming out tomorrow morning, they'll be upgrading that area and installing the binder course on Stacy Court, so that will be taken care of. They've got a second crew working on Third Street, they'll be milling Third Street tomorrow, and then putting some of the binder in as well tomorrow. Um, they're not here on Thursday, but Friday, they're expecting to get the final service, and they'll, they'll take care of. So by the end of the week, we should be in a situation where we only have restoration to be completed. So everything should be buttoned up, um, they backfill the curbs, rough grade at this point in time, maybe to save as possible, so the kids for the Halloween as well. So we're looking good for our completion schedule, uh, for next month.
So I thank you, um, without going through this entire report, just, I was just wanting to remind you to do it, and please give me any questions. Uh, just remember, uh, the next Cal meeting, um, is on November twelfth, November eleventh is Veterans Day. Just please, uh, everyone be aware of that, that residents as well as the council, uh, we will be on Wednesday, November twelfth. Can be at the hole at six thirty, and seven o'clock, the regular scheduled meeting, so it'll be Wednesday versus Tuesday. And again, as a full report, please feel free to give me a call or ask if you have any questions. So I have.
All right, thank you. Sir, do you have anything?
I do have a few different things, um, if you wanna make a couple announcements, um, LRS, the garbage company, will be doing their fall cleanup. And it will be on your scheduled garbage day, either Monday, November third, or Tuesday, November fourth. Um, I do have on the website, some of the acceptable items, it's other flyers, or you have that up on that website, if anybody wants to look at that. We will accept box trains, sofas, different furnitures, water softeners. They will not accept any electronics or hazardous waste or landscape waste. And speaking of landscape waste, if you have those totters, that the last week in November is the last time that the yard waste will be available until April then. So you can use that second filler as, or that second can as a secondary garbage can during winter. And then just a reminder, Friday is a lot of trick or treat, and the hours are five to eight. So those are the announcements that I have. And then we have, um, the garbage bid opening, which is November fourth.
Yes.
November fourth, so we do have a bid opening for the garbage contracts, to see, um, what would be available, if you wanna change or keep with the same system, same company.
Good.
And that is coming up as well. So on the agenda, I do have a couple of ordinances, the first one I have is requesting. A motion to approve ordinance twenty-five forty-six, and which is approving and authorizing the city of Braywood to enter into, and for the mayor of Braywood to execute a quote. And statement of work for civic loss regarding codification of the city's code of ordinances. And this is what I brought to our last Cal meeting. And it's about our, all of our code of ordinances to get them checked and verified, and. So that'd be searchable much easier than the PDF file that we have now. And the full codification is, it's listed in, um, statement of work, it can be drawn over two fiscal years. So they're only requesting partial payments at a time.
And they, they enter everything, right?
Well, like, I would submit all the, all of our ordinances to them, and then it's gonna, it takes like eighteen to twenty-four months for them to go through everything, it takes a very, very long time. So this is not something that's gonna happen right away. But, um, moving forward, it'll be easier, but it's just gonna take a minute to get everything up and running, so it is, it'll be an ongoing project.
That's what we used to have in the past, right? It was nice. Easy to find the ordinances when you search. All right, thank you.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So then the second one I have. Is I am requesting a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five forty-seven, and approving and authorizing the city of Braywood to enter into. And for the mayor of Braywood to execute a quote and statement of work for civic loss regarding the city's website and media related services. And this was the other portion that I spoke to at the last Cal meeting as well, and this is to upgrade our website, and to upgrade some of our media stuff, and it would all be integrated together. So having a new website and media and these code of ordinances, they would all be linked and interlinked together, and be searchable across the entire website. So we would update to the standard form of, um, webpage that was I, um, had to be.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that's all I have for tonight, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Uh, engineer, you're up.
Um, I already gave a million, just to report, basically, uh, update for the road projects, I do have one item on the agenda, the request, um, motion resolution, motion to. To approve resolution twenty-five point three rejecting bids for the water and most of our fuel plant standby generator projects. Uh, recall, we went out to bid on this project, um, we notified a lot of contractors, we had five plan holders, but we only have one bidder that submitted. Um, and reviewing that bid, that, well, the bid was high begin with, but it was also inherently an actual tabulation of the bid, uh, for lump sum items. He included the lump sum price also in the actual individual unit price items, so when you calculate the bid, it's significantly higher. So, uh, we're requesting rejecting bids and then authorizing the city manager to, uh, engineer to work with the contractor to negotiate, try to give them a little better pricing. The contractor's indicated he's willing to do it, and then make the way so he can actually see some more.
Okay, so that's why the bid was so high, then?
Correct, and then some of the other contractors, we reached out to, they're just fine with work, it's hard to get electricians and everything else out there right now, with all the, probably just going out now, so.
And like you said, if something happens, we don't get it done, we can wrap one if there's.
Uh, this, this.
Uh, center up, if you, anything on the sidewalk grant at all, have you heard of it?
I have not heard of the grant, it's, it's put in, uh, I'll find out exactly when we start to hear back on that one, generally takes, I doubt a couple of months to get back to us on that. Um, again, we would not, we're, we're not recommending proceeding with anything else as far as the engineering at this point in time. We just will hide out that, you know, we were, that's something we publicly get in fiscal year twenty-six, capital system law, we wanna find out whether we got the grant.
Yeah. Sounds good.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
City attorney?
Working on a lot of stuff, but. Another report to the public, uh, on account of.
All right, here we have, next up is reports by city commissioners, accounts of finance.
Um, I need a motion, or I'm making a motion to approve the payment of bills in the amount of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Included in that is AT Energy for forty-seven, VNF inspectors, fifteen thousand. Uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield, twenty-three, five, uh, IT services, thirty-three hundred, uh, lighting, dinner, G, energy, uh, twelve thousand, block twenty. Um, the. Seal coating that was done at the depot was twenty-one eighty-five, and, uh, thanks for Scott, Scotty went ahead and made sure we got a bid, or got a price and got it done, so thanks to him. Uh, Midwell Salt was fifteen thousand, RMA, which is the liability insurance, was two hundred and fifty-five, and then Robinson Engineering was seventy-one, uh, thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven. Eighteen thousand of that we'll collect in professional fees, and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one is development plan service, and seventy-seven hundred is for the Osler Safe School Grants. West Con was twelve thousand, and Woodfleet was fifty-three hundred, which is our fourth payment, I think we have two more.
And I will second that.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve payroll in the amount of one hundred and five dollars, one hundred and five, one hundred.
Right there.
One hundred and five thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-five cents.
I'll second.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Okay, so, uh, we have to do our property tax levy, which we'll vote on, on November twenty-fifth, but this is what we're looking at. The estimated twenty-twenty-five property tax levy is two million, eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which is less than a hundred and five percent of the amount of property taxes actually extended the preceding year. The twenty-twenty-five property tax levy is proposed for final action at. At the city's November twenty-fifth, twenty-five regular meeting. Twenty-four levy was set at four point nine nine, and the twenty-five is set at four point five a difference. And, um, I did some research over the audit fines, and this is what I found out. Uh, the possibility of trying to lessen or have the audit fines. Uh, that will be incurring in December drop, it's not gonna happen. According to the controller's office, we have to pay them first. We have to send the audit to the controller's office, then they will send us forms, so that we can tell them why we shouldn't have to pay the fine, and they might drop it. So either way, we're gonna have, we're gonna incur probably, I figured about six thousand fines.
That's for the twenty-three audit.
No, that's for the twenty-five audit. The twenty-five is next, and I talked to Chris today, and he's thinking that maybe we might get a review of the twenty-four audit, I'm gonna. Shortly. That's it.
Okay, uh, streets and bullet improvement. Dale's not here tonight, is there anything to talk about with streets, other than they're just getting down the projects?
No.
Just when you reported, yeah. I drove, by the way, on Beat Lane, it looks nice. Hey, um, public buildings and property, Moore's not here. So we wanted to discuss.
I do have this report, uh, what the guys have done for the last two weeks. So there were seven on and off, um, a few boxes for non-payment, there was five, uh, water meter repairs, one water leak repaired from our syrup pit. Seventy-five locates, ten hydrant drains, twenty-two hundred monthly water reeds. Mounted an AED box and sign in the hallway for Josh, so we have one of those good laders now.
So I like that, yeah.
Uh, worked on the sign outside at city hall, and we have to order parts, because our sign is not working, and so the parts are on their way, so hopefully we can get our sign up and running here soon. Fifty B-boxes were plotted and, um, on the subsurface maps, and located the water main on Beat Lane and plotted, and also on the OSL for the hydrant on Beatin' Ridge. And that's the report I have to make.
Yeah, I, I forgot, um, thanks, sir, because Steve and I were talking one night, and we're like, there's no AED on this side of the wall. And we're like, yeah, maybe we need one, there is one on the police side, but to get to it, you can't. So we had, uh, purchased and had it put up, it's right as you come in by the window, and George put it up for us, thank you, George.
Yeah, we probably need to get everybody trained there.
We are, we're gonna do training now and back, so we can set up a date for training. Everybody will get CPR certified or not CPR.
Public buildings, I don't know what this is, tell me what we're talking about, how about I did the email, that we got estimates or something for some of the roofs on?
I got, yeah, I have it.
Okay. Here, so then, like, new business or something?
Yeah.
So, the mayor, just to, just expand a little bit, uh, the salt dome has been leaking for several years.
Yeah.
And, uh, so they have a quota of replacing some of the roofing on the salt dome, that whole team is extremely high, roughly the ninety thousand dollar range. Uh, there's also leaking in some of the other, uh, facilities at Public Works, uh, there's quotes that Scotty has received, uh, we're working through those quotes. The unfortunate part of it is, like, Sean talked about the generator bid, we're finding contractors are extremely busy right now, and they're just throwing a dollar amount, see what sticks. We're not getting the best priced quotes, um, but we're kind of under a gun, because it's gonna start getting pretty wet pretty soon, uh, especially in the salt dome, so we're trying to work through that. And figure out what is the best course of action to take, not only to solve our leaking issue, but also to pay, you know, fair market price for what the repairs cost.
Well, he also got a bid for fifty, Mueller was forty-three, or fifty-four thousand.
That couldn't include, that didn't include the, the salt dome, I don't believe, or no, the other buildings.
Yeah, I don't have a front.
Black roads, black roads.
Yeah, no, there's no salt dome.
Yeah, so the other those were fifty-four, and then the salt dome was, I think, in the nineties.
All right. We'll move on to public, public state tables.
All right, Mayor, I got a few things tonight, I'm gonna need a motion to approve the ordinance twenty-five forty-eight, I'm needing the city of Braywood code of ordinances as it pertains to administrative adjudications.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, I guess to second it, too.
No, we made a motion to extend it, Mark.
Huh?
I made.
Oh, I'm sorry, I second it, that's.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty-five forty-nine, authorizing the mayor of Braywood to enter into ex- execute and intergovernmental agreement between the city of Braywood and the recuster community unit district. Number two, five, five U regarding a police resource officer for a school year of twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, last one, I'm gonna need, I'm sorry.
Rover, you were just updating our, our contract for the school resource officers.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I am gonna make a motion to approve. I am going to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five fifty, approving two quotes from the Twin Supplies L T D regarding the LED light replacement program and authorizing the city of Braywood to enter into and for the mayor of Braywood to execute any related documents. Before we vote on this, I'm going to let Chief Allen talk about this because we haven't talked about that.
Yes, thanks, Commissioner. Um, who's back? I spoke with Steve, uh, regarding replacement of some of these deep over headlights or the fluorescent two-by-fours, police department side. Liked the idea and asked me to get a quote for the entire bill. So I reached out to, uh, Twin Supplies. Um, I'm familiar with them. They, about three years ago, utilized a Comnet grant program and replaced all the lights in the shore of police department, and I know they also did it for the city of Womack, um, some years back. Comnet has this, uh, public sector small facilities plant that's runs annually, has for several years, that offsets the cost tremendously. They're able to switch out all the interior lighting, over a hundred light fixtures with motion sensors, um, all in LED for fifty-nine hundred and fifty dollars, which is pennies. Um, LEDs are definitely a positive. We'll see that return, that money return in the, no. It was a no-brainer. They did really good work. It worked really fast. Um, and I think, you know, I had George, I talked to him about this for about two weeks ago. One of the ballasts was humming like a motor, um, in the hallway outside my office and he said, if you want to change it out, the ballast could, two hundred dollars a piece plus this time. Um, that adds up pretty fast. This will eliminate those issues going forward.
And outside?
And outside is a different one. The outside, um, they had a quarter set, leave for the place, the six nine-inch round and true LED from outside of both. Both lights are very inefficient. Um, the nine-inch LED will be costly as well.
Alright, thank you. So now, I believe the chief is in charge of, the P D is also in charge of photometrics and lighting for, uh, Braywood, so, thanks to chief, bye.
Okay, I also have a press release from October fourth.
I read this back at, you told me, yeah.
Hey, you really want to get out of here.
We won't say why you must get out of here.
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I have a press release from October fourteenth to the twenty-seventh of October. We had three hundred and sixty-seven, uh, total number of calls for service. We had forty-two case reports. We had, uh, subject arrests were six, total arrest charges were eight. Total number of traffic stops is one hundred and twelve, citations was thirty-five, written warnings were fifty-two, semi-truck violations were two, and the total number of P tickets were nine. And for the code enforcement for the month of October for ordinance twenty-five thirty-five, the term vehicle includes, but is not limited to automobiles, trucks, trailers, buses, recreational vehicles, campers, boats, tractors, motorcycles, snowmobiles, buggies, wagons, and disam, disamble, this is amemble, dissemble, uh, vehicle parts. Sorry about that. We had, uh, abandoned and proppable vehicles removed from private property total were thirteen. By compliance was eleven, by tow was two. And one more thing here. In the last two weeks, we had two of our officers complete their eighteen-month provision, probationary period and they are doing very well. Our officer participated in the Recuster High School Career Fair, the drug take, drug back sponsored by the Braywood Area Health Community Coalition and the Braywood Fire Department open houses. Our officers and ESDA managed morning, managed the morning and evening traffic control during the power plant shutdown. Finally, we had, we held an orientation and written examination for the police department applications. And that's all I have there.
Thank you. I'm going to zone you. George, you're up. You got anything yet?
I think the report today, bear, our next meeting will be announced.
Okay. You might have some things coming your way for this doing, hopefully. Uh, any old business? You think anybody wants to talk about old? Liz, you got any old business right now? No, it's old business. Alright, let's move on to new business. Anybody that did get a new business?
He did it, so. I talked about the roofs.
Okay. Alright, does anybody have anything for executive sessions? Alright, the next, uh, meeting will be on Wednesday, uh, the Rock's Wall at seven P M, which we moved, yeah, we moved to Wednesday because Tuesday's a holiday. Um, at seven, do we have a community to hold before the last six-thirty? At six-thirty? Yeah, so we have a community to hold meeting on six-thirty on Wednesday, November twelfth. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
We have adjourned.
It's a record, bro.